Pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Next regular meeting, and that happens to be a landowners' meeting, is scheduled for Friday, January the 27th, 2017, at 9:00 AM at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Seabring, Florida. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. The first order of business this morning is a swearing-in ceremony for Dr. Wally Edgell and for Curtis McCullough. Tanya, I will turn this over to you.
We have a special guest for our swearing-in ceremony. Judge Peter Estrada is here, and he is a circuit court judge, and he was appointed here in Highlands County in 2005. I'd like to introduce him. You don't need a microphone necessarily.
Both of us, same time?
No, we're going to do one individually.
Okay.
Before we begin, I am a resident of Sun and Lakes. But I won't tell you where I live. Which right hand? I, State Unit A, I'm Wally Edgell, be citizen of the state of Florida, and of the United States of America, and being an officer of the Sun and Lake of Seabring, and proven District Board of Supervisors, and a recipient of public funds, do hereby solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida, and that I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially perform the duties entrusted to me while in office as supervisor of the Sun and Lake of Seabring, Improvement District Board of Supervisors, and will not neglect any duty imposed upon me by law, so help me God. Congratulations, sir. Let's get some sick, sir. Let's get your signature. We can really make it official. Mr. McCullough, would you step down? Mr. McCullough, would you please raise your right hand? I, State Unit A, I'm Curtis McCullough, be citizen of the state of Florida, and of the United States of America, and being an officer of the Sun and Lake of Seabring, Improvement District Board of Supervisors, and a recipient of public funds, do hereby solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida, and that I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially perform the duties entrusted to me while in office as supervisor of the Sun and Lake of Seabring, Improvement District Board of Supervisors, and will not neglect any duty imposed upon me by law, so help me God.
Judge, thank you.
Thank you, Judge Estrada, for taking the time to do this for us. First order of business is the consent agenda. Minutes of the Regular Board of Supervisors meeting held Friday, December the 9th, 2016. Treasurers report and golf financials for October and November of 16. I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Discussion from the board? Go right ahead, Wally. I got something. If anybody else, you got anything, Mike? Chrissy, on page three of the minutes, there was an error, I believe. Dr. Edgell asked the promotion on the Jacobson mowers, and you have downed tires. It is mower decks. If you would make that change in it.
Okay, I believe Mr. Kurtzborn said tires in it, but it is incorrect. It's supposed to be...
Mr. Kurtzborn is in the back. I think it is mower decks, is it not?
It is. It's supposed to be mowers decks. Yes, it is supposed to be, but I...
Is that right, Jim?
I apologize, I didn't hear the question.
The promotion for Jacobson mowers was for mower decks. Is that correct?
Attachment reels.
Attachment reels, okay. Mower deck, I think.
Yes, they're rotary mowers, but they're rotary...
And since Mr. Kurtzborn made a misstatement in the audio, which he said tires, what we can do is reference to it...
That's fine.
Oh, okay. Okay, we're going to, we'll change it.
Okay.
I just had one question as I was going through the Treasurers report, Omar. Who is Escavation Point, Inc.? It looks like they're, they must be a...
It's a big company, construction.
Yeah, construction company, construction.
Correct. Escavation Point is the company that's been doing the majority of all our drainage in the district.
Okay, so that's the drainage people.
Correct.
That's what, I thought Mike explained that to you, I'm sure it was, okay.
Okay, anybody else? Any public comment on the consent agenda? Back to the board. Chrissy, call the roll, please.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President White?
Okay, action agenda. Resolution number 2017-01/13-01, a resolution of Sun and Lake of Seabring Improvement District to approve an interlocal agreement with the Board of County Commissioners, Highlands County, Florida, for the maintenance of the roadways and thoroughfares within the district. I need a motion to approve. Gentlemen?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
President, you want me to go over this at all? This is the interlocal agreement that was presented by Ross Macbeth's office. We discussed it, I believe, at the last meeting. The draft is basically unchanged from the draft that we received from Mr. Macbeth's office. We did make one minor change in paragraph four to specifically include that the district has the right to, you know, to maintain the right-of-ways and medians and roundabouts on Sun and Lake Boulevard. But other than that, it's essentially unchanged. And the whole purpose of this is to basically just clear up some procedural issues that when the, when the roadways were originally dedicated to the district back in '74, and then in '86, the, as explained in the agreement, there was some paperwork, a district ordinance, I mean, a district resolution and a county ordinance about how the roadways are going to be maintained. There was some subsequent case law that came about that said that that was done improperly. And so this is just to clear that up.
I've got one question. It's the only question I have for it. We've talked about it two or three times. Is there any possibility that we can collect anything for our mowing?
We, we looked into that with Spring Lake being a kind of a comparison point because Spring, Spring Lake gets funds from the county for maintaining, and they maintain all of their, you know, right-of-ways and all the, which are all county roads. The, the calculations that we did, basically, we'd only be getting about $1,800 a year. And so we didn't think it was worth it to go through all of the extra effort for $1,800 a year.
Okay, thank you. Any of you got any comments? Mark? Kurt? Mike?
Yes, sir.
Public comments? Okay, back to the board. Chrissy, call the roll, please.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President White?
Next item on the agenda is the resolution number 2017-01/13-02, a resolution of Sun and Lake of Seabring Improvement District to approve the recommendations of the Assessment Appeal Committee. Gentlemen, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, let's, in this, let's break this down into two units. The first one is assessment, exception for a lot owned at, or a series of lots owned at 4875 US Highway 27. It consists of 9.97 acres. Of that, 3.18 is apparently pretty much a swamp, as I understand it, and a exemption has been given on that 3.18 acres before. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody got any comments on that particular piece of property? Nope. Any public comment on that piece of property? Okay, let's go to the next one. The next one is a piece of property located at 4504 Calatreva Avenue. The property owner requests a waiver because there's no sight, no visibility of the golf course, and it amounted to $58.62. This one has never been given a waiver before. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Public comment from that?
Well, we did give a letter from Dave Halbick about that.
Yes.
That considered there. I want to overlook that lot to make sure I had the right one.
Excuse me, do you speak into the microphone, please?
I thought they were picking it up. I want to overlook that lot to see what it was. They have no view, there's no construction going on or anything else, but then after looking at the rules and asking about that, no view is to be considered, is not to be considered to, for, to cut the $58 and stuff like that. But I guess that's still us, what we want to do, right? That's all I got to say.
Mark, go ahead.
Yeah. I basically agree with what Wally has said. However, my concern is that somewhere down the future, there'll be a lot of people that might try to appeal this. I realize it's only $58.62, but I don't know if we're going to open up a whole can of worms with a lot of people. And I know, I believe, and David, you can correct me, this doesn't set a precedent at all. It's just a one-time exemption, correct?
That's absolutely correct, and this exemption is specifically for one year. So they'll have to reapply each every year. So if there's, if any maintenance is done that opens up visibility to the golf course for this lot, then obviously the assessment committee can review that and deny it next year if they want to.
And I, too, went over and looked at that lot, both aerial view and I drove over there. I, I think for this one time, I would, I would certain, have they been notified at all, Tanya, about this at all?
We have not sent any notifications since we had the meeting.
So they are not aware that they've...
They do not have an outcome yet, no.
For this one time, $58, I would, but I certainly wouldn't entertain it next year.
I guess my concern in this whole thing is it's based on adjacency to the golf course, not on view or sight lines or anything else. So to me, I don't think it should be allowed, myself.
I, I looked at it, too, and, and I understand over where, like where Wally used to live or Lionel La Montage, they can't really see the whole golf hole, but there's maintenance going on there. And when I looked at this place, I mean, I understand the charge for maintenance. I mean, that makes sense because we mow in between there, but with this lot, I mean, what do we do? I mean, there's a lot of lots, I'd say on Turtle, that we do nothing, and they can't see the golf course and they get charged. So I, I'd like to get in the next year, get it clarified, what, why are we charging, and who, and why, and where, and it just, to me, doesn't seem, somebody was awfully liberal when they decided what a golf cart or a golf lot was, but...
The, the assessment is based on the location of the lot. So if the location of the lot is on the golf course, then the $61 undiscounted assessment is applied to that lot. Whether or not there's a view doesn't matter, the way the, the assessment is allocated, so...
So the stuff between it is considered ours or golf course?
It's considered golf course, even though there's no view.
Like where Wally lives, there's a, the golf course takes care of up to a white stake, and then there's another, what?
I think it goes to Mike, then.
It goes to Sun and Lake, right?
Yeah.
And they're the ones that do the maintenance on it. And that's, that's another 100 feet?
Yeah.
That we maintain. Now, I can understand that, but in these lots, we're not, I mean, I'll go along with it, but it just seems like we don't have a, something that's...
I'll go back and take a look at the documentation that created that assessment and see what the actual, you know, the purpose and, and thought behind it was, and we can bring that up at a, at a separate meeting and find out if it needs to be clarified.
Yeah, I'd like it clarified because it's just, you know, I agree with Kurt, what Kurt says, too, but it, it just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem very accurate with one and then the next one, and, okay, that's all I got.
My opinion of this is, is based on what we have right now for, for ruling on it, that we do not give them a, anything on it. It, the assessment, as far as I'm concerned, should be full according to the way our rules are written. So that's my opinion of it. Rick, any of you have anything else?
No.
Go ahead, Rick. Public comment?
Rick Holbert, resident, former board member. You set up a committee to go over these requests, and now these requests are coming to you, and you're sitting there and second-guessing the committee. The committee went through these and made their decision, and the board's responsibility now is to approve what the committee decided, and that's all you're supposed to do. So I don't know why the board is up there second-guessing what the committee decided.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick.
Tom Coste, resident. It was explained to me several years back that the golf course lot extra that's charged, as far as Turtle Run is concerned, is for extra maintenance with regard to the easement, the conservation easement that we have on Turtle Run. The extra assessment on Deer Run was charged because Deer Run consists of, if you, if you take the entire area that is considered the golf course property, as it appears on the county plat, it's an extremely large number of acres for a golf course, for an 18-hole golf course. And the logic of applying that extra assessment was for the additional maintenance required that was really not a golf course problem, as opposed to extra space behind those houses. That extra assessment has been in place for 13 or 14 years for golf course lots, and that's the way it's applied. Now, that lot, that particular lot, which happens to be Bob Severino's mother-in-law's lot, that particular lot is one of four or five that's right there in that same spot. One of the lots in that same spot only has 45 feet of frontage on that so-called area between the, their private property lot and the golf course, and they'll be playing, paying the full amount. We've already had the can of worms where we've adjusted assessments because somebody didn't have as many square feet, or many feet on the golf course as their neighbor did. I just think it's, I think it's not wise to be rewriting these application of assessment rules. I don't think it was ever intended that that extra be for a golf course view. I really don't think that was the intent. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else?
Rusty Craino, resident. Good morning, gentlemen. I've had a little running issue with this problem. I live over on Turtle Run, over there on the ninth hole, and I'd like to know if I could apply for a refund because of the amount of money that I've spent in having the thing cleared out and everything taken care of and maintained. Right now, the district has done a superb job in taking care of it, so I have no qualms. But for many years, I footed the bill out of my own pocket, and Mr. Olson, who was the expert for this particular habitat and so forth, did a lot of work, and if you used him, you know that he did not come very cheaply. My concern is, now we're taking a look at this, I've got a concern about whether or not the person purchasing his property had a chance to inspect it when they bought it and to make a decision as to maintain it and so forth. But getting back to my regular question, if you're going to start making these special assessments, and I have no qualms paying the $50, $60, whatever it is, for if it is being utilized to maintain the area, which the district is doing right now, okay? My question, my second, I have a second question here, and my second question is, since we're being assessed these dollars, how are these dollars being handled on our books? Are they being used, are there's a separate account being set up for, so to show that this money is being paid in and so forth for this, or is it just mixed into the general funding? That's my main concern.
I presume it's in the regular fund, but I don't know that.
There is a separate account as the revenue is deposited into the district general fund, and there is a separate account, and the monies that we collect is approximately $43,000 a year on these golf course lots, and they are transferred to the golf fund through the subsidy.
Okay, so we can, we can have accountability as to whether or not the, those lots that are paying this fund are being serviced properly, is my concern. I know you guys are doing a great job now, Tanya, but all I know is I did a lot of battling before, especially my wife and so forth, over that area, but that was my concern.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead.
Omar, did the committee, was the committee of the understanding of what the, what the rules are about this? Was that discussed when this particular one was voted on?
We did discuss it. We brought, at the committee, we brought an aerial view of the lot. We also brought the payment history, which showed that that property owner had been current. I think the committee took all this into account, and I think the biggest deciding factor was that aerial view. And once you put that in front of someone, I think the actual rules kind of don't even come into play anymore. So I think that's, that's kind of what, what transpired. The aerial view really called, called for the decision to be made.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, we need to bring this up for a vote, then, correct? And it's voted on as it stands?
Yeah, as drafted, both exemptions are being granted.
That's better explanation of it.
What, I didn't hear, David?
I'm sorry?
What'd you say?
I said, as the, as the, the resolution is drafted, both exemptions are being granted. So if there's, if there's, if you don't want to, if you don't want to grant one of the exemptions, you've got to have a motion to amend the drafted resolution.
Amendment can come first?
Well, it has to, yeah. You'll need a motion in a second if you want to amend it, then we'll have to discuss how it's going to be amended.
Okay.
So you want some of you to...
I'm asking, all I'm doing is looking at you and deciding and seeing if you want an amendment.
I'll make a motion to amend Resolution 2017-01/13-02.
Okay, direct...
To remove that, that golf course, is that, is that the amendment you're talking about?
The one in particular, the Duffy property. Remove that from the current, original.
Okay, that's the second, correct?
No, we'll need a second, yeah.
I need a second. Okay.
Question. This, if we did pass it, it's got to come back up again next year?
Correct. This is a one-time exemption.
It's a one-time, okay. Thank you.
Got a second? I will, I will second that amendment. Okay, and first of all, we have to vote on the amendment.
Yeah, you need to have a discussion on, any discussion and public comment from the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Any more comment from the board?
No.
Any more from anyone else? Okay. Chrissy, call the roll, please.
Supervisor Edgell?
No.
Supervisor Camp?
No.
Supervisor McCullough?
So we're voting on the amended?
No, you're voting, voting yes is to amend, no is not to amend.
Oh, yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
No.
President White?
Yes. Okay, now we come back, that motion failed.
Correct.
Now we come back and vote on the motion as it was written.
As stands, yes.
As stands. Chrissy, call the roll.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
No.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
President White?
No. That motion carried. Resolution number 2017, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. 2017-01/13-03, a resolution of Sun and Lake of Seabring Improvement District to approve a change order number two with EO Cook Construction Company for an increase in the amount of $13,908 for the additional firearm system. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion from the board?
I just wanted to ask Mike or if it's anybody, shouldn't this have been in the original plan or... original plan or original permits, I'd say?
Well, the, it was the fire marshal that, that made them put it in after he, he looked at the plans. So I don't know when he looked at them, when he didn't. I would assume yes, but, you know, that could have been missed, I don't know.
Okay. Mike, any questions?
Sure.
Kurt? Public comment? Chrissy, back to the board. Chrissy, call the roll, please.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President White?
Yes. Next item of business, Resolution number 2017-01/13-04. A resolution with the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve a change order with Daleen Real Estate and Development Corporation for the extension of the blower installation project. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. I might mention, bring us up to date on that, Tanya. And I know we got this extension quite a ways out, but we've had some big changes in the last week.
Yes. We made progress this week with this project. The new blowers and the electrical work have been installed, and Duke actually did install the meter on Tuesday to provide the power for the equipment. So because of the change order, we were, you know, we have been uncertain about Duke's, actually the installation of this meter and the experience that we've had with Duke, we, you know, we are requesting an extension to March 1st. Also this week, the startup was performed on Wednesday, and everything went very smooth with the new blowers. We have some new electrical work that has been completed this week to remove the old panels and connections to the old blowers. The generator startup is scheduled for Monday, January 16th, because there's different, we have Trade Winds, which is the generator that we purchased, and they will be on site on Monday. The cover structure is scheduled to be installed by the end of next week, and within the next two weeks, we hope there's no more delays. The only item that remains should be some final grade work around the new blowers. So we made some really good progress this week.
Okay, thank you. Discussion from the board?
I was out there yesterday with Michael, and I was a little surprised when I saw this, and I said, oh, and the blowers were running, everything was going. So the startup, as you said, the timing was a little different. So is this basically going to be tabled? I mean, there's, there's no need for an extension other than we're going to start up the, the generator for Trade Winds?
Well, the original November 26 completion date was extended by the board at the last meeting till December 26. So technically, we do need an extension of time, maybe not necessarily 60 days now, that would, because we were uncertain about Duke Energy from the beginning. So we don't, we don't foresee that we need 60 days now, probably just 30. But either way, we can go ahead and grant an extension as the resolution is written. But Daleen is very motivated to finish this project now that Duke has finished what they've needed to.
And that's those blowers that you showed, yes, me, yes?
Yeah.
They have the incentive to get it done because they don't get paid till they do.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, fine.
Any more discussion from the board? Public discussion? Okay. Back to the board. Chrissy, call the roll, please.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President White?
Yes. Next on the agenda is a discussion of the Run Girl Engagement Letter. I think you all have that in front of you. Jim, do you want to highlight it? This is a second. This is strictly a discussion, not a, not a motion, or not a need for a motion at this time.
Jim Kurtzborn, General Manager, Sun and Lakes Golf Club. Yes, in our capital plan for this fiscal year, we've got $35,000 allocated for a tee project. To do a tee project correctly, at least that I've been involved in of this scope, you, you need an architect for a number of reasons. The first one is basically, he's a professional, he's trained, and what he does on a daily basis is look at course design going forward. He's going to be up to date on the metrics that are used when you're trying to determine the positioning of tees. He's also going to be skilled on where the tees should be along with their lengths. And then probably, I believe, of the most importance to us is the fact that he'll generate bid specs and drawings that we can then put out for RFP to the contractors so that we can have specifics of exactly what we're paying for and making sure that all of the contractors are bidding the same, same project. I spoke with Ron. We actually negotiated, you know, his fee down based on what we thought would be a reasonable fee. If Ron was our architect of choice, since he's familiar with the property and has done, you know, number 18, but we did have other, you know, other architects that we would have fallen back to, if Ron was not able to move into the fee that we thought was appropriate. He did agree. He's actually, you know, been here many times. Yesterday, he came here actually for the, to see some players that are on the Latino tour, because he has a couple courses that they play in that tour. So he's getting very familiar with the property. You know, even though we didn't pay him to come yesterday, actually Ramon Perez, his brother Juan, who's also a superintendent, was here yesterday, and Ron Wonderling was here just kind of coincidentally. So we actually even went out and looked at the dirt that we had taken out of five, you know, five, six on Turtle that's actually stored, to see if that dirt's going to be used, and Ron's going to come back, no charge in the future to, you know, help us analyze if we can use that dirt, which would save us some money in trucking costs and excavation costs. So, long story, but that's basically Ron's, Ron's going to be irreplaceable in this. I guess the last thing I would add is just in talking to Ron, he's interested in us doing a survey of the membership, which I can easily do since we have a subscription to a survey system where we can ask just the input of every individual member. We've already done it from the groups, but every individual member, how they feel to the tee lengths that we have and locations.
Okay, so he's willing to listen before he starts on this?
Oh, yes, that's, yeah, that's, input from your membership's very important, so he can understand, he's, he will get the, if you want to call it the metrics from our USGA postings, you know, to get an idea of how many our members are playing, you know, each set of tees. But it's definitely, I've been involved with Ron for over 15 years, so I've seen the way he works. He's very customer-centered. You know, it's, each plan is individual to what that, that club wants. So the demographics of the club, you know, the location, the age of the members, the skill of the members, and what the design is trying to accomplish is, is very much in his, his idea. He owns multiple himself, owns part, partly shares in public golf courses. So, you know, he understands what it is to have to, you know, blend public play and member play to pay the bills.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Mark, questions?
Yeah, just, I know that Ron is a very well-respected individual in the industry and has done a lot of work here, so. And I also know that we, they had come in, he had come in a little higher and kind of said, can you negotiate something a little lower? You had a couple backup plans in the event that he couldn't meet where our expectations were, at least from a pricing standpoint. Do we have a feel, did we ever reach out to those individuals to try to get a feel where they would have come in terms of consulting fees?
I did not contact Mike Dasher, who I've actually built nine holes with Mike Dasher, so I know him well, and Gordy Lewis, who is actually, I would say, one of the more, well, he is the most economical architect on the Southwest Coast. When you start looking at an architect's fees and you're looking here, you know, at a minimum of two visits, where these other architects wouldn't have been familiar with the course at all, and I actually am not personally familiar with, when I worked with Mike, we built the nine holes, you know, additional, we had an 18-hole course, so we added nine. There wasn't member input on that, so I'm not sure, you know, how Mike would have handled the member input. And I haven't worked with Gordy Lewis specifically to know how he would have handled the member input. So I knew it was very important to us, and I knew the number of trips that Ron was going to make. This is less than half of his normal fee, based on what he, you know, a normal site visit for Ron to come to your club is $2,500. I've paid him over 20 of those. So, you know, he's, he likes his relationship with Sun and Lake. You know, Ron's not getting out of the architect business, but he's winding, you know, but he's winding down. So he, he wants to contribute to the community. He's very, you can tell there's a very positive energy from him about Sun and Lake. But yeah, we could go look at those other architects. I would be, yeah, I can't imagine that they'd be more than $1,000 less, but I don't even think they would be. I think they would initially come in higher than, than the $5,000 bid, and we would have to try to, you know, negotiate all of them down.
I appreciate your answer. I, I wasn't, I'm not an expert.
Oh, no, I'm trying to be informative, because I think, you know, it is a consideration, we could have used any of the three, you know, architects, and they all would have done a good job. I think the, the thing that was, the important thing to me is I, I felt very certain that Ron would give us the feedback and the input from the members that's important here, and he already knows the property. There's no way if either of these other architects would have given us a lower bid, that they would have really known the property. You know, they would have come in and tried to be doing a site visit and doing the tees the first time, you know, where Ron's done a master plan for us. He's already been on the golf course, you know, at least four times in the last year. He came with the sports riders that were here a couple months ago. He was here with a site visit, you know, David Bell and I, just a courtesy to me to look at Mrs. Hertz's tree, because she had requested a memorial tree that, you know, didn't fit into our program. So basically, he brings things to the table that the other architects just couldn't bring.
And I, clearly, I take your judgment. I, I'm just one of those individuals sometimes that like to do comparative shopping.
Right.
And I, since I'm not an expert in that area, I didn't know if this was something in line or not.
Yeah.
And I know he has experience with the course, so I, I think the continuity to keep him here is great.
No, and I appreciate the question, because to be honest, I knew Ron would do the best job, but until you've asked me all these questions, I didn't realize how much more qualified he is than the other people we would consider based on all those, you know, the extra knowledge that he has of this area and this course.
Thank you.
Wally? You're good? Michael?
Good.
Curtis?
Good.
We don't need public comment on that at all, or don't think, do we? Nope.
It's up to you.
Back to the board, your consensus? Do you want to send him a, a contract?
Yep.
Yes.
That's true.
Sure. I think it's unanimous.
Okay, understood.
Okay, next, no add-ons item then. Petitions and communications. The first one there is MS Builders has asked for a waiver to increase the amount of pavers in front of the house at 5293 Pebble Beach Drive. And our normal amount there is 30%. They've asked for a 20% variance, which would make it 50%. Mike, you were looking at something yesterday about the paver thing, and it didn't seem to add up when we looked at it. What'd you come up with?
Right, and it didn't add up. It actually is between 15 and 16% more that he's asking for. The blueprint that we have from the contractor, and the blueprint that I have from Bob is, is our two different blueprints, and what Bob wants to do is less than what the contractor had on the blueprint. So he's asking for, for actually less than, and it's about 15 or 16%. I went over there, and I went over and I took a ride by with George, also from Rhodes and stuff, and we have no problem with Bob getting that extension. I mean, the whole neighborhood, there's a house right, right down the street is almost the same, exactly what he's asking for, so. And he's using pavers, I mean, the house is beautiful. The only thing it's going to do is improve the neighborhood, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
No, I actually went out there yesterday myself and looked at it, and I went next door to Greg's and saw that. My only concern is that maybe in the future, I don't know why this came up at a later time, why it wasn't in the initial plans, and I'm not going to speculate on that. But it seems like these come up quite often now, so.
I agree with you. Wally?
I agree with this. I've been over and looked at it a couple times, and it's, it's improvement to the district. I would like to approve it, but then I'd like to go back in our discussion at the end of the meeting to talk to you all about this, these questions.
Okay.
And this, this cover sheet, it says front and back. Is there a back variance as well?
There's a map.
Oh, it's on the back.
It's on the back.
All right. Hey, I'm the new kid, right? All right, good enough.
Do we need public discussion on this?
No.
No? Okay. Back then to the board?
Yes.
The way I understand it, you want to approve it, is that correct?
I'm fine. I'm fine. Definitely.
Okay, second item on the agenda?
It's just a petition.
Is a thank you letter from the Sebring High School Cheer Boosters, thanking us for being part of the trick-or-treat, trick-or-trot, I'm sorry. Apparently, they passed out food at that event, and it's just strictly a thank you letter from them. And the third item on it, I'll let Tenille explain this a little bit, and I think we have a gal here with the March of Dimes. I know we do.
Yes. Jessica Adams is the Development Manager for the March of Dimes for this area, offices based out of Lakeland. And they have come to us with a request to host their March of Dimes baby walk that they have in the county every year. It essentially would follow the same route our 5K run follows, but this is a little different because they're just walkers and they're, they would utilize more of the sidewalks than per se be in the road, aside from the places on Cortez and Matanzas that don't have sidewalks. But again, majority of the walk would be done on sidewalks. And I know in speaking with Jessica, and she can, can answer any further questions, but, you know, any places that we, you know, we have to have them crossing, like Sun and Lake Boulevard, they're more than happy to hire a sheriff's deputy to help with that, like, like we have for our 5Ks, just for the safety and traffic flow. It's not, you know, it's not timed, it's not a run, they don't charge their participants. This is definitely, this, in my opinion, would be a great positive for us to sponsor this. And if y'all, do y'all have any questions for Jessica?
Jessica, would you like to make some comments?
Sure, so my name's Jessica Adams.
Introduce your name first, please.
Okay, Jessica Adams. I'm the Development Manager for the March of Dimes, and like Tenille said, we are requesting to use your grounds for our March for Babies walk. We have it every year in Sebring. It covers Highlands, Hardy, and DeSoto Counties. Like she said, most of our walkers are families, mostly impacted by the March of Dimes, so they have children, and lots of the mothers have strollers, so they're not timed. It's very leisure. It takes them about an hour. We set up at around 8:00 a.m. Takes them about an hour to do three miles, and then we're all packed up by noon.
Okay. Where have you been holding this prior to this?
Before I started at March of Dimes, it was downtown, and then the last two years, it's been at Highlands Hammock Steak Park.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the board? Comments from the board?
I think it's great.
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 Bring it on.
Good job.
Yes, thank you.
I think you're in.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Uh, ready for staff reports? Who's first on the list?
Whoever wants to go first.
Jims, jump in.
Okay.
Jim Kurtzborn, General Manager, Sun 'n Lake Golf Club. The good news is we're busy. It's a busy week. We're hosting the Latino Tour this week, which is going very well. Probably blessed with the best weather we've had for the event in the while. Tour is very impressed with the conditions of the golf course, the improvement in the conditions. And hosting the Latino Tour and then subsequently in April, hosting the Canadian Tour is definitely part of our promotions to try to market, market the club and increase the awareness of Sun 'n Lake. Financially, we're doing very well. Our golf operations performance is very consistent to 2015 and 2016, which is good news. We've been monitoring our membership levels closely. We did have a good December and beginning of January, so the numbers that we were looking at from the shortfall in membership have decreased somewhat. Right now, the projection would be in dollars that we would come in about $36,000 this year behind, behind last year. So that's pretty much a reflection of about a 4% decrease in revenue and a little bit more than a 5% decrease in members, since we had membership increases to the five-month seasonal and the three-month seasonal. But overall, those numbers, you know, are less than we originally estimated. Our outside play has done very well, so we are estimating that we should be, should be able to recoup those numbers with outside play. Beyond that, our restaurant operations year-to-date are very consistent to 2015 and 16. With our food, we're slightly trailing for some reason. People are drinking less in our banquets and in the clubhouse, so I guess we want to rectify that as a business. The golf course is in excellent condition. Relative to the financials, you'll see that the change away from overseeding has shifted that expenditure, so we're actually ahead of plan now on the golf course, but that should level out as we get into the year. We've got a number of initiatives, marketing, that are in place now. We actually have, we have six different people who've signed up and sent us checks for our stay-and-play unit. One of them is for two weeks, and the other one are single weeks. We're going to be attending the Snowbird Extravaganza in Lakeland the end of this month, which is a, it's a trade show that primarily focuses on Canadians. And there's around 50,000 of them that usually attend. We'll be sending someone every day there to promote our stay-and-play packages, which we'll be discounting heavily. We'll be sending them out to our membership with the discounted numbers, because of the six people we've gotten so far in stay-and-play, five of them have been member-related. So only one, you know, came from un-member-related. So that's pretty consistent with the industry, is that your current members get you your future, your future members. We're also scheduled to attend the Toronto Show, so the Tourist Development Council pays for that show and actually pays for the hotel room, but we're responsible to fly someone there and then pay them the meal. So Tim McGanley's going to go to Toronto and promote our, our packages there, our stay-and-play package. And I've also negotiated with Phil Hatfield at Inn on the Lakes this coming December. We're going to run a buy-one-get-one-free that we'll be promoting. So from December 14th to the 28th, Phil's, you know, if somebody rents a hotel room, say on the 14th, then on the 15th, that'll be free. And if they played golf here on the 14th, then on the 15th, that would be free. So it's all an initiative to really draw people to knowing that Sun 'n Lake and Sebring are here. We feel like once we get them on the property, that's the hardest part, is just to get them here. Once we get them here, we'll see why we love it so much. Beyond that, just relative to the Latino-Canadian qualifier, Monday was our busiest day of the week, so I reached out to Highlands Ridge, actually negotiated a rate with them, and then slightly subsidized the rate for our members, because we were oversold. It is pretty common, actually, our course access for our membership, 150 members per 18, is probably lower than any course I know of. So that's one of the things I think we have to promote to our members, is a member value. I think they've had that access where they could play anytime for so long that they really don't realize that's not the case at other golf courses. So that's something going forward in my general manager updates that I'll, I'll make aware to them. We've already talked about Ron Garl. Other than that, the two looking-forward initiatives that we have basically are Turtle Run. We're looking forward to this, this coming summer, where we can work on the soil composition to bring the conditioning of that golf course up to Deer Run. And we're also looking at our food service in the Island View. Our, our current business plan doesn't reflect any accommodations or extra staffing for shotguns coming in. So generally, in our budget plan, we're staffed for two to three people to handle the shotguns coming in. We're not really going to try to bring any more people on, but we're going to try to take our current people and reposition them to cocktail, basically, the shotguns. The difficulty with cocktailing is that a normal private club, where you try to cocktail a shotgun, it's eight to 10, you know, eight to 10 service staff to cocktail a shotgun, and we're doing two to three. Now, a normal private club loses $1,000 a member, too, and we turn a profit. So there is a reason that our food service is more efficient, and it is about how we run it. But that's something we can look at in the budgeting process, if we want to allocate more labor to that. But we still are going to put an extra effort and assign a couple different people that would be working dinners to mostly cocktail, try to make sure that everything stays clean and clear, and make sure when people come to get their second drinks, that we can try to cocktail their tables and see what we can do without having any additional costs. So we actually covered that in the golf committee meeting, and then subsequently, I covered it with Tanya and President White and Bob Butts, the golf chair, just a few days later. So that's my report. Are there any questions?
I have one. How are we coming with the pump?
Uh, the pump is progressing nicely. I would say we had a glitch. It was an ice glitch, but our original contractor, when we went out and got bids, was approximately $4,000 or $5,000 higher than another bid. So it's not, was not the simplest thing to get our motor and pump back, you know, from the contractor after he had already done the analysis. But our, the contractor with the best price now has the pump and motor, so we're just in the process of him evaluating that. He just received the motor on Monday and the pump on Wednesday, because the pump was sent to Georgia for analysis. But I would project, he's told me that he'll get back to me when he has a finite date, but I think we're looking at a couple weeks, and then we should be up and running without any problems. But it is, it is a laborious process, and there's not a lot of people that do, that do the work. So the person we ended up finding actually is from the citrus industry and is just segueing over into the golf course industry because of the slowness in the citrus industry.
Thank you. Jim?
Hi.
I'm going to start down there with Mark.
Just a few comments and a few questions, if you don't mind. For those people that haven't had the opportunity to play at another course, I have to make a comment. We went over Monday because of the Latino Tour, and you had made arrangements for us. We went over to Highlands Ridge, and I have to tell you, it'll make you appreciate how nice these two courses are over here. If you have an opportunity to play Highlands Ridge at this... By the way, they charge the same... Actually, they charge a higher rate. Now, they did have a full course over there, so I'm not sure why that's happening. We should have a lot more business over here. But anyway, it really does help us appreciate this course. I do have a couple of questions, though, and I don't know, maybe we approved the budgets for November, and the financials, I should say, but I do have a question in terms of... I noticed that our food and beverage, as you mentioned at the beginning of your overview, that we're down on food and beverage, and we're down actually considerably on food and beverage, which I thought this would be the high time of the year. But secondly, we're way up on expenses, so I'm trying to understand how that correlation works.
Sure.
For an example, if you look at the year-to-date versus last year on food and beverage gross revenues, we're down. But if you look at our operating expenses on food and beverages, we're spending more money. So I, I'm just kind of asking that question, trying to understand why that might be. I'm sure you have an answer for it.
Sure.
And then a follow-up question is, and I'm not sure, maybe everybody else knows, I don't know what amenities are specifically under operating expenses, but that's, that's a big number, too.
Sure.
And that would be on, you know, for November I'm looking at.
Sure. So basically, when you look at those numbers, what, what you're experiencing and seeing, and I'll get you more detailed explanation, but you're seeing a budget that's based on historical repair, and you're seeing a building that's starting to reach, you know, an eight to nine-year window. So, you know, right now, on my desk, to get bid out, is the replacement of two refrigerators that are behind the bar. So, you know, what's happening there... So in other words, the expenses that we're talking about are repairs and maintenance that are happening to the building is the major driver of these extra expenses. And so I'll get you more detail to that. But, you know, that's basically what's happened, is that most of the equipment, I think, varies from six to 10 years in life. And we base the budget on the previous year. And you know, if you've owned a car, that your repairs and maintenance on a two-year-old car and an eight-year-old car are very different. And so that, that's what you're seeing mostly in, in those increases there, because it's not food and labor that you're seeing the increases in, it's the actual expenses of operating.
Okay. And in terms of the revenues on the other side that we're not bringing in?
Uh, actually, year-over-year, for food and soft drink, non-alcoholic beverages, we're ahead of last year. So through November, $402. For alcoholic beverages, we are, we are trailing $7,500 or $7,429. So...
Okay. I think I'm, I'm sorry. I see it as $7,957 is, we're down $7,957 year-to-date. Last year, what was $229.7... Year-to-date is $229.743. And prior to this year, it was $237.699.
Okay.
I mean, we can get together.
No, yeah, we're, I'm sure we're looking at different reports. I...
I'm just looking at the November report.
Perfect.
Posted.
Yeah, and I'm looking at the November income statement, PL Detail, which is the most detailed report. So that's the one I'll usually reference. But yes, so our, our year-to-date for food is $162,529. Last year's food was $162,127. So that's actually a $400 increase. Our year-to-date beverage is $59,599, and last year was $67,028. But we can get together to...
Okay. Thank you.
To get more specific answers.
Wally?
Yeah. At Lakeland in Toronto, Jim, do we have a table or display or anything like that where we're setting up Sun 'n Lake, so people can come and talk to us?
Yes. Well, basically, there's a lot of collateral that'll be there. Sun 'n Lake isn't paying for the booth in Toronto, so basically, it's Tim's presence that's going to convert the people that come to look at... I mean, we'll have our stay-and-plays there, but it's really us having the booths on the ground, if you want to call it there, when they come to the, come to the booth, that Tim will be promoting Sun 'n Lake, along with all of Highlands, you know, County. Because as I said, if we get them here for a stay-and-play through the inn or a stay-and-play through our villas, that's our purpose.
Okay. Okay. So we will have something there that the people can tangible...
Oh, most definitely, yes. Yeah, we'll, we'll have something that we hand, you know, we'll hand them a promotional on the villas, you know, and included on the villas will be other information about the club.
Yeah. Is, is that meeting in Toronto and Lakeland, is it only golf?
They're Golf Alliance shows, so yes. I mean, it's just everything that applies to golf, but primarily their travel. But I have not attended either of the shows.
Okay.
The Golf Alliance shows are a new initiative that TDC's done, you know, with that citrus golf trail that I, that I lead. So this is the second year. I mean, we're learning as we go, but it's definitely, you know, working to promote the area, because we feel certain, you know, based on what Mr. Camp said about our competition, if we get people here, we feel certain we can keep them.
Right.
Our deal is getting them here.
Yeah, well, obviously, the stay-and-play is working, because I come up with a couple that wanted to come down and stay, and it was full. So it must be working. But just two other things. I mean, these are just quick things. I think Mark, Maida, and Vicky are doing a wonderful job. A wonderful job. They, they're out there. I see them when we come in for playing golf. They're out there with us, you know. I think those three are doing terrific job. I don't know the other people. I don't know. The last thing, yes, when we were playing golf, we kept on thinking, anybody can remember to do this? That ice machine out on number six, the turtle, is still broke.
Okay.
Yeah. Take a look at that. And that's just because I promised the guys I was going with. I'll remember that.
Okay.
Mark? The only thing I have, Jim, is I'd like to throw my hat in to go to Lakeland, if it's possible.
Oh, that'd be great. Yes. I'd love to have anybody who could go.
That's all I have. Okay.
Kurt?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any more staff reports?
I don't believe so. Do you have anything, Tenille? I just, I'm going to give a project update during my report, so...
Okay.
I just want to remind everyone that we have our community yard sale next, next weekend, the Saturday, on Saturday. We have 56 homes that have signed up to participate. Now, those are people who have, you know, signed up through us, and will be on our map, and we'll have it posted on our website what they're selling, and, you know, they'll be registered properly through the county. Now, we know that there's people that still go ahead and do yard sales, but they won't be, you know, included in our map, so we may have more properties. And this is about the number that we've gotten every year, so it will probably be pretty busy through here, just to forewarn everyone. We also have our new residents and visitors reception coming up on February 7th, and we're doing a community CPR class that Jonathan's instructing on February 3rd. So those are a couple of things coming up. And a pickleball tournament on the 8th of February.
Thank you. Mike, are you figuring on leaving town the day of the sale?
I am.
No other staff reports? We'll move to general counsel.
All right, gentlemen. There's no, no litigation and foreclosure report in this meeting. We had a discussion, my paralegal had a discussion with Tanya, and I think the best thing to do is, is we're going to start doing that. If there's more than one meeting a month, it'll be at the later meeting, those, those reports will come in. However, the Griffin suit is... However, the Griffin suit is progressing, there's been some filings, and Mr. Koji has requested from me that we look into what's known, or conduct what's known as a shade meeting. Due to time constraints, we've gone ahead and advertised that we've discussed it with President White, and scheduled a special meeting for that purpose. That meeting is going to take place on Tuesday, January 17th at 9 o'clock?
10 o'clock.
9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, I'm sorry, 10 o'clock here. Shade meeting is a kind of an interesting process. Basically, what's going to happen is we'll open up a public meeting, we'll announce what's going on, and there'll be a court reporter present, and then the meeting will go into the shade, and the public will not be allowed to be present. Everything that goes on in that meeting will be recorded by the court reporter. At some point, you know, when the shade portion is closed, we'll come back, let the public back in, announce that it's been concluded, and we'll adjourn. Those notes that are taken by the court reporter will be held until the litigation is concluded, and then they'll be available to the public. But the whole purpose of the meeting is to discuss the litigation strategy and settlement options. So again, that'll happen Tuesday, 17th, here, 10 o'clock. Any questions?
Nope. Okay. General managers' report.
Happy New Year to everyone. Our annual landowners' meeting will be held on Friday, January 27th at 9:00 a.m., and this is the meeting that we also hold our annual board officer elections, okay, January 27th. Our new maintenance facility is progressing along. Eo Cook is prepping the foundation for the main building, and the old buildings are about 70% at this point demolished. We are waiting on authorization from the state of Florida to move the old gas tanks, and we should be bringing you another change order at the next meeting for the concrete. We discussed that with you at the beginning of the project, that we can save sales tax on concrete. Revisions to the initial building plans required by the building department review have been complete, and the contractor has submitted them back to the building department. That's our, I believe all of you have toured and taken a look at the maintenance facility, there's really nothing there, but you can see that they're starting the foundation at this point. The architectural proposals for the clubhouse expansion are due Tuesday, January 17th at 2:00. So we have, we expect a number of proposals coming in on Tuesday. A new swing set has been installed here at the recreation complex, and that project is now complete. Our drainage projects for Tangier Street, Florida Avenue, Arvita, Calatrava, and Sunrise are set to begin March 1st with the final completion date of June 1st, and that is the contractor that was awarded that bid is excavation point. Also part of our drainage, we've sent, we sent 40 letters to the homeowners on Turega Street back in December. We only received 11 responses from those letters regarding the special assessment of the infrastructure renovations that we proposed. Out of those 11, 10 said no, and one said yes. This is an overwhelming response of no, even from the no responses at all. So, you know, at this time, we're going to be sending a letter back out to those residents, letting them know that we will not be moving forward with this project. That presentation was done as a special meeting, I believe, in the spring of 2016. Also drainage, we've performed some culvert cleaning on the western portion of Santiago Street. This was done with a vac truck this week, and the results were as expected. We had about six loads of dirt that we hauled out from those culverts. So that was a very successful project, and we look forward to doing some more projects similar. Also, letters were sent to the lot owners on Metanza Street, Granada, and Nada Street to inform them of some possible future drainage maintenance that we're going to be doing behind their lots. So we have received some phone calls and concerns about some of their property being in the easement, and I believe fences, sheds, and some other things. So Mike is going to be working with those residents to assist them in their questions. Before Christmas, I gave you some updates. Our water meter transmission units, the radios, as we call them, about 67% of them have been replaced as of December, and these are all under warranty, so we're working with KP Electronics on that. But I just wanted to, you know, give you a quick update on some things I gave to you by email. Also, myself and Wally had a meeting with the county on December 14th to discuss the progress of how the county is moving forward in the ordinance to actually sell their surplus property within the county. And any policy and procedure that they adopt will also apply to the district. So the county is expected to have an ordinance in place within the next couple of months. I've mentioned to you that we have a new monthly reports tab on the website. This is for you to access all of our departmental monthly reports, and so that's a work in progress, but I just want to let you know that that is there on the website. Our initiatives for the new year is as a marketing plan and to develop a long-term financial capital plan. So I believe, same as Jim mentioned, that our initiatives for marketing are, you know, are, we have, it's going to be number one on our list in looking at for this year.
Okay.
That's all.
Mark, any questions?
No.
Wally?
No.
Kurt?
Yeah, I've got two quick ones. Next year, when we do the budget, will we put in there some of the stuff that was just done with the vacuum and the, on those things, or is that a budget item that we will go over or will be done sporadically?
It's going to be within the drainage maintenance budget, yes. We want to incorporate funding for that project. You know, of course, it's depending on what the board decides as part of the budget process, but we're going to propose it, yes.
Good, okay. And did you mention, when you mentioned the drainage sink manor, or have you heard from the letters we sent to the people?
We haven't sent any letters to the homeowners on Sunrise yet. We have some work to do, and that's March 1st, when excavation point starts that project, they're going to start in Unit 2, which is Florida Avenue. They're going to move to Arvita and Calatrava. We have some work to do with the Sunrise project still. And if there is any proposed changes to that project, we'll bring that to you within the next month or so.
Okay.
But we haven't informed the homeowners or anything yet. I mean, that gives us some time to do so, and that's the reason for the March 1st. And again, the contractor had some scheduling conflicts, so we agree that March 1st would be a good time to start, start that drainage project.
That's a question I had on the Sunrise end, is depending on the answer that we get back from the people on Sunrise, correct?
No, no, it isn't.
Well, we're going to be informing the residents of Sunrise what our plans are. There have been discussions with myself and Mike about other possibilities of what we could do in that area. Boring has been brought up and some other things. Boring is very costly. The second concern about boring is, is it going to be effective to what we're doing? Because, you know, once, I don't want to go into too many details, but boring could cause dips underneath the driveway and some other things, and we need some time to look into that. We...
But it's contingent upon them approving the drive, the cost of the driveway and whatever.
Well, at this point, we awarded the bid, so if we get feedback from the residents and they do not want any financial involvement, then that's my job to bring it to you at that time, and let you know what responses we received, and we can move forward. Could that project be eliminated? Yes, it could be, depending on, it's up to the board. But we need some time to actually reach out to the residents, talk about the project, go over, you know, even Mike said I'll meet with each of them individually to discuss it with them, so...
Okay, thank you, Tanya. I don't think we have any unfinished business or new business, do we?
No.
Committee reports? None? Okay. Public comment?
Patricia Ginn-Jamie, resident. I have a general comment in regards to the statement that was made about committees. Committees are put together to review situations and to make recommendations to the board or whomever they report to, and it is not expected that the board should either approve or disapprove of the recommendations, they're just to be informative. So the final say and decision rests upon the board. Second of all, what time is the annual landowners' meeting? It was stated it's on the 27th, but I don't know the time that was...
It's, I thought I announced it at 9:00.
Thank you.
Maybe I skipped over it, I don't know.
The other thing is, in regards to the new situation with the recycling bins that will be given out, I know there are a lot of covenants that say that we cannot have fences or whatever, but some of these bins will be too large to keep in a garage, so that's going to be a problem that I see in the future and will have to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Tom Costy, resident. Couple things with regard to the maintenance code. I'm curious to know, I think back in December, there was a magistrate attended, had a meeting here on, I think, December 16th with regard to 3808 Manza, which is that pool that has been pretty rang behind where Mike Onack used to live, and the house is still way overgrown in the lot. Was a decision made about how to go forward with that property? We, our Manor Hill Owners Association have been getting some comment about that.
Well, yeah, Tom, we did cite them, we contacted the bank, and they'll be coming to a hearing on all that now, and I think it's February...
I thought they were on the schedule for the December meeting.
Well, they didn't show up, so, they were cited, but we wrote them another letter because we're trying to get it fixed for the people that just bought the house.
Oh, the house has been purchased?
No, 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 no. The people who bought, Mike own it.
Oh, okay.
So we're trying to fix it for them. We have put the mosquito tablets in the pool.
Okay.
So we're trying to do whatever we can, but then again, you know, when the bank owns something, you know, they move slow.
I thought if the owners didn't show up at the meeting, they automatically got found guilty and you could proceed.
But we did write, write to the bank again because we're trying to get it fixed as soon as we can.
Okay, thanks. The other question, Manor Hill owners have been, the association embarked on a project to upgrade and update our restrictions throughout Manor Hill. There's 357 properties, and there's actually approximately 20 different areas in Manor Hill that have their own set of restrictions. We need to update them and try to come up with, we're going to have, we're going to try to consolidate everything into one set of restrictions. But we held off in view of the fact that the district, for the past year, has been analyzing its own maintenance code and with an eye towards getting it approved by the county. Has there been any progress on that? We've been holding off. What's the status of the update of maintenance code between Sun and Lake and the county?
My understanding from Mr. Macbeth is that that is going to be going before the, we got back his red line versions or his post-changes.
Just last week.
Yeah, just last week. And by understanding from Mr. Macbeth's office, that's going to be going before the BOCC sometime late February or March.
Okay.
But yeah, we're finishing up that process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Rick?
Pat Reese, resident. Trying to take just a few minutes today to let everyone know that we have started a new business here in Highlands County. It's called Edens Pat's House Watching LLC, where it insured bonded house watch company. Ed has some brochures, if I could just pass them out to everyone at the table there and along the front. Can he do that?
I would say no reason why you can't.
Can you pass those out, Ed? One of the things that we found is that there's a lot of people that do some house watching in Highlands County or throughout Florida that are not insured, that are not bonded. We felt it was a good thing to do. We've gotten a lot of feedback so far, we have about 60 clients so far. We just wanted to share that with all of you in Sun and Lake, that this is something that we are doing, and if there was another time that we could discuss longer than a few minutes, would love that opportunity, but I just wanted to share that with everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two things. Number one, what I was getting at is, it appeared, the comment that I made earlier about the board second guessing what the committee did in regards to the assessment changes. What I was getting at is, it appeared that half the board up here went out and looked at all these properties after the board already had made the decision that the board had been set up to do, which I felt was, why set up a board to do that when the board of supervisors is going to go out there and second guess us? That's all. Second, I understand that our GPS units on our golf carts for outside play members are, about 60% of them aren't working. And if that's the case, I'd like to know why, and what's the warranty on them, and, you know, what's going on?
I don't know, but that's interesting, Rick, because we have a contract, I know, on those to make them work indefinitely, as far as I know. Jim, can you answer that question?
Thank you, Rick.
Jim Kurtzborn, general manager, Sun and Lake Golf Club. That is correct, that we have been experiencing difficulties with the GPS units since June. We've been in, you know, contact with the supplier as the numbers grown. I believe it's 27 of the 96 carts, you know, have difficulty. As I left this morning, we received last week 30 brand-new units to, you know, to fix those that are failing, and the reps here today installing them. The day before the units got here, I did call Ron Wonderling and ask him how we proceed with legal action, since we felt, you know, things were not moving appropriately. I'm also in communication with the person at DSG about a rebate, since we're not having 96 operable units. So that's where we are now, so, you know, as of today, I expect all the units to be fixed. You know, we're going to stay up on top of it and seek any damages, for lack of, you know, non-performance. But yes, that's where we stand with those now. Fortunately, it was over the summer, so it wasn't a major, major impact, but we have been on top of it, and it has been frustrating that they have not been more responsive.
Thank you. Rick, thank you for bringing that up, because I was not aware of it.
Yeah, I wondered.
Rusty Creno, residence. I have a couple of concerns there, and the first one, first of all, in regards to the maintenance and so forth, to the best of my knowledge, that piece of property that's in question, that's asking for a waiver, that person's son-in-law was instrumental in setting that assessment, okay, just for your point of information. My other concern is, I drive down Sun and Lakes Boulevard, I come in, make a left-hand turn, I head west on Sun and Lakes Boulevard, and I see a nice, beautiful sign advertising Sun and Lakes Golf Course and everything like that, it's really nice. The travel going west is lovely, the medium strips is well-maintained, clean, the banners and so forth are flying really nice. This Christmas went by, and I saw the Christmas display that was really lovely, and it was a tan, a lovely young lady, head of the beauty committee. Did a super job. And as I continue on my travel on Sun and Lakes Boulevard, the same thing is maintained. And then I get past the retirement center. On my left, I take a look, I see garbage bins, I see a maintenance shop, I see equipment is just... is just scattered throughout this, inside this maintenance shop. And I think we spent something like $50,000, you may want to correct me, on a new pickle court, tennis court. We have a $6 million beautiful clubhouse. What's wrong with this picture? I mean.
It is a temporary thing. We had to, but we had to put our maintenance people someplace.
Are you kidding me?
Nope.
I have yet to see here where we have a beautiful thing going. You put an eyesore, I can imagine those people in that residential, that retirement home, you're making a lot of friends, you know? My question to you is, how would you like to have this thing next door to you backed up? I know I would, I'd be, you'd see me a whole bunch.
Hopefully, in, what is it, August or September, it should be out of there and hopefully those bins will be out sometime in maybe March.
Okay, good, good, because I was wanting to know, because I apologize, I haven't been to a couple of these meetings and I would have.
Don't forget.
Express some strong feelings, but I'm glad to hear, Mr. White, you're saying that this is a temporary situation.
It is temporary. The bins, don't forget, the county has taken care of that and you, you can see our new fire station, too.
Okay, because, because I kept wondering, why in the world are we putting this stuff here on a main thoroughfare, advertising our community when we should be on a secondary base?
We couldn't find any place else to put it that had access to everything that we needed and would be secure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My other thing is, is as I receive this agenda, I was really thought a item number 17. I'm glad to see that was added, because I think it's very vital, because people coming from business and people doing with government rules and regulations, it's a different rules of engagement. And I think this is a vital part.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Board discussion. Mark, I'll start with you. You got anything for this, this month? Wally?
Yeah, sure do. I'll go with the boat and RV, what we've been working on it. We looked at other RV boat storage areas around Tanglewood, one that most people use and so forth, and we found out last week that Tanglewood was broken into, many things were stolen off the boats and off the RVs over there. And when I went to the police about this to find out that we are, we're making the preparations for our security and it's exactly what they wanted us to do, to build, if we do build it, put higher fences around it, to put lights, motion lights in there, cameras and so forth like that. And it wouldn't have happened to Tanglewood, but they only have a six-foot fence. So, the kids got into it, but they won't get into ours. If they do, they're going to have some barbed wire wrapped around. We, we've got a survey going out right now in the communicator for a needs assessment to find out what, if there is a need for the RV park and what it is presently, although we want to throw this over into the marketing area with Taneele, when we, when we're doing a marketing, to let people know we have a boat, an RV storage area here or will, because part of the marketing that we're working on will also include fishing. We've got most lakes around right here that we haven't, we don't even advertise, so we're working on that, which, Kurt, I want to talk to you about something here since you're on the board now. And Tanya and I were involved with the, the two, the place over beside number one green that we first discussed, has two lots there, and she's working with those owners to see if they make way to trade lots or sell lots or whatever.
Well, not yet. I think that we want to see if there is a need here in the community before we.
Right, right.
We move forward with any discussions, yeah.
Yeah, before we approach it. Plus, we have another spot picked out if that doesn't work out. Paulson did a couple of quick drawings for us, premature drawings for us, to show us what it could look like over there and so forth and for large, medium-sized boats and so forth. So, we're well underway on this, it's just the fact that we just, we need just a little bit more time to develop the plan. In the marketing part of it, for the committee that we're on, we did have a meeting and on the 14th to get things started. We have people looking at different things. We went to the county meeting with county commissioners and the whole idea being, the county is our, that owns most of the lots in here, and they are going to work with us and we're, we're working out a plan with them where they will get the taxation taken care of on the lots and clean them all up. Their attorney said he would clean that up and then they will work with us, where we will be the real estate agency to market those lots, to get people in here, and then we're at our twist to it, with the free, years free golf, whatever. We talked about a lot of things, but we've got to get the lots away from the county and over to us, okay? And this, the lots that they're really interested in moving are the ones over, where Pebble Beach is on the, on the west side of town, over in there, those lots across, I want to say Bob Butts' area over there.
It's on the west side of Deer.
Yeah, the west side.
On the front nine, yes.
Right. And so, and our golf cart lots over there, so that's what we're working on with the county, trying to get an interactive agreement with them and it's working. We've been working on the, the golf club website's coming along great, that always helps have that up and going. Some visuals in there would work out great. We're working with Golf Digest and ARP to try to get our advertisement going with them. Andy Keston is on the committee. I put him on there because I wanted, a pro on there tells what literature they would have us advertise in. He's, he's got that list for us for our next meeting. And Kurt, I was wanting to ask you, you went to a meeting with Cliff and Tom up to, I've got it here, nameless place, and I wanted to know what you thought of these people. What was the name of it, Taneele?
I was only talking about the email or the media advertising.
Right, media advertising place.
Legendary, legendary.
Yeah, legendary marketing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he's got a conference in Orlando coming up or something.
He does, on the 23rd and 24th, it's $475 to go to it. I wouldn't quite, what I wanted to note, when I got on their site, it looked like the only thing they worked with is golf courses. Did you get any gist that they would be working, be marketing our other things, you know, or fishing and recreation?
No, no, he's, he's target, he targets the.
Those golf.
Golf course.
Yeah.
But, he's got a, according to what he told us, that he's got like an email address of like 10,000.
Yeah.
People, so, I think what he's trying to sell is that if you hire him, he can get your message out quickly, very efficiently and, and mostly Canadians and Midwest people, I think is where his, his list is from, so.
So, what do you think? Is it worth us to go talk to him or?
I mean, like go to his conference, is that what you're saying?
No, I don't think we can make it to that conference. I was thinking about, I know what that conference is about, he's going to explain all those type of things to it, but I was wondering about going, if we, if we needed to go see him, if you thought he was reputable enough, we could go see him, visit with him, see what they charged, see what.
Well, if I remember correctly, if he came here and made a presentation, it was $5,000.
Yeah.
Is what he charged. So, if the conference, if you go to the conference for 500 bucks and it's an hour away, to me, that's, that's the route to go if you just want to feel the guy out. He did speak with us and we drove up to, forgot where we went now, someplace up by Black Diamond Ranch anyway.
Yeah.
In fact, he's part developer of that. He saw us basically, in fact, Tom Coste went with us and I don't know if you remember any more information than I do, but that's kind of the gist of what I got out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, okay, well, I appreciate that. I didn't know whether to pursue that or not, and I think right this time, I don't think we've gone and done $5,000 in just.
Well, the $5,000 is just for him to come and talk to us.
Yeah.
I mean, there's still other charges for.
It's.
I think if I remember right, he has a staff, I think he told us of like 15 or 20 people that.
Yeah.
That work in the media aspect of it.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that.
I think when you, we get a clear direction of where we're going and how we want to go, he might be a guy to bring in or talk to, but it might be a little premature now.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that.
You got something you had to tell?
Yeah, just, well, as I recall, the, one of the highlights that he presented to us was Treetops. He's done, he's done the website promotional stuff for Treetops with Rick Smith in Michigan for some time. And he, he kind of presented the improvements in their performance after he got involved. He's very targeted. His, his mailing list is, he's, he's got a huge mailing list that he can target by state, areas of the country. And also, as Kurt says, he was quite thoroughly into Canada as well. So, it just seemed to fit with regard to, you know, where our targets are at. We know that most of ours are coming from that same area, so that's all I remember. Didn't he say, didn't he say you could format a program for us, like if you want to spend $10,000, you get this, you want to spend $20,000, you get this? Yeah, yeah, he also, the other, the other point that he made was that now, springtime is when we should be doing it. If we're going to do anything at all, it takes about six months to put the program together and then to have it ready to go when the buying season hits, which is usually around this time of year.
Yeah.
So, if we're looking to have anything in place by next year, we need to be talking about it now.
Yeah.
And we went up, was two years ago when we went up, so, you know, we've kind of, you've got to have a crystal ball and know whether or not you're going to time it to a good market, you know?
Yeah, I agree, I appreciate that, Tom. That, I don't think we're there yet. Our marketing program is moving along. Taneele's got great, there it is, Taneele's got great ideas of what she's doing. We're investigating, we're asking people, we're studying, just trying to move this thing along and it's more difficult than I thought it was going to be, so we're moving, we're moving. But, I think, like you say, we need to have more direction here.
Yeah.
Before we go jump into something like that. I got just one other question. Spring Lake is doing some works and water work and so forth up over there, just on today's paper, and they're talking about the state revolving fund. That revolving fund, in most states, that's pretty well interest-free or minimal interest when you're receiving grants and so forth like that. I just thought that might be a thing, keeping a back for mines if we get into drainage, things like that, you know, we might go to the state revolving fund and at least check them out, you know? I forgot about that. We had in West Virginia and the interest was minimal, minimal.
Spring Lake received an SRF loan for their new wastewater treatment plant. It's a very small plant.
Right.
But, it's over 30 years, I think is the payback period, interest-free for, for that particular loan that they have. Is that what the, did the paper talk about the new sewer plant?
They had a sewer plant.
Okay.
The USDA rural development has the same ones, and they're partial grant, partial gift.
We are familiar with those, yes.
Okay, great. That's it.
I got a few things, but I got a question for Wally. Wally, on this, I saw the survey that come, come from the district office about the RVs and boat. I just want to clarify, I mean, in my mind, this is something we need, but is this survey to see how many sign up and that gives you something, how big we build it? Or, because in my mind, it's something we need. And we all know people with boats and RVs, maybe not a whole bunch, but I think it's something that will certainly grow once we build it, but I didn't know there was a question whether we might not build it. And I got that from you guys.
Yes.
You know, I, I just think this is something we, we truly need. I can see it might have something to do with how big we build it, and that's what these, this discussion thing is for, so I can talk to you guys, just so you know where I'm coming from. I mean, I don't know if, is five enough or is 10? I mean, what do you, what are we?
That's what we're trying to find out.
Yeah. I know where you're going with this.
Yeah.
How big do you build it? Do you need it, first of all?
Yeah.
And that's what this needs assessment is going to tell us whether we even need it or not. Now, I've had people already come up and verbally say they, they want it to be like that. But, yeah, that's going to be the, the guy in the corner. If we get five people, do we build 20? If we get 10, do we build 30?
Yeah.
You know, spaces, so for like types of spaces, I learned from Paulson and I learned from Tanglewood, you have large, medium and small spaces. You know, so, I think that's all on the drawing board, but what I wanted to get that survey back for is just absolutely, if it's going, we need to get it off the ground.
Okay.
If there's people that have boats and want to do it. But, my other part of that was to throw these two, meld them together and put it into our marketing program, because we are not marketing all these lakes around here. We've got fishermen right in here to tell you that, the fishing around here is great and we don't, we're not selling it. Now, some of them can't fish, but they.
Yeah, yeah. We've got a couple of them out here that can.
A couple of them, yeah. But, so, yes, I think it ought to go. That's what I want to present to the board and hold, once we get the surveys and everything done, swap pick, everything, Mike and I price it out, get everything done.
Okay.
Bring it forward, say, here's what we got. And it's, and I'm like, I wouldn't even jumped on it if it wasn't the fact that I felt from the other guys that we know.
Yeah, that's what.
Keep bringing it up. My neighbor was waiting to buy a boat, so he had a place to put it.
Yeah, and that's, that's my concern, because I, I think it's something we need. It might not be something that's real big at first, but I certainly think it's something that for the future will, will be needed.
Mike, over the last three years, we went back on, we gave over 100 citations.
Yeah.
Because of RVs, boats, trailers, so, I mean, there's definitely a need. I mean, 100, you know, 100 over the last three years is, is quite a bit for just that one, just RV, so.
I went down my hands about 7:15 this morning and there's got to be six boats in people's driveways and even in the condominium or the townhouses that are there. And there was a police officer washing his car in the middle of the street. I mean, I know there's a group that move boats from week to week just so they don't get a citation.
Citation, exactly.
And that's why I say, I was just concerned when I heard the back and forth that if we only got five people, we're not going to build it, well, I think we should build it.
Right, and it's also size, too. The length of the boat.
Well, that I can understand, the size.
So, you could go by and see one, but it couldn't be, you know, right up to code. So, it's kind of tough to actually, but I know 90% of these people that are bringing their boats in ask for it, so.
Yeah, well, that's what we're after.
Yeah.
And, you know, you had told me that, and that's one thing that urged me on to do it, so, we're just getting the survey just to see if people are not committed, but let us know.
Okay.
And I was going to tell you, too, the first location that we've looked at is very small. I mean, if we get 50 responses, then that first location may not, it's out the door. So, that was another thing. The second location is feasible.
I just at first thought, oh, maybe we won't do it, well, and that's why we're here, I guess, talking, so we, you know, I want them to know that I'm very much in favor of this, so, because I've had a lot of people talk to me about it.
Hey, Mike, I got a question. Are you, will you be able to force these people that are parking their boats in their driveways and stuff, force them to use this facility?
Well, I, most of the people, when we bring a citation to the house, the first complaint is, well, where can I put it? You know, where do I take it?
Okay.
You know, and we've given them cards for across the street for, and up on, up on Walmart, you know, we tell them where they can go, but the, I think the key, key is having it here, they can go to it anytime and if they can work on it, if they want to work on it, clean it and stuff, and I think that's, I think that would be a key.
There would be a rental fee as well.
Yeah.
To cover the cost of security and other things, so we would have to adopt that fee as well.
We're having people ask about the, the next location.
The location, yeah.
The streets, and one that we're looking at, Mike, you want to, you know Orion, those streets over there?
Well, one's over by the school. It's, that would probably be the biggest area. There's power out there and the other one is in, is on the side of the maintenance building, but I agree with Tanya. I think if we're going to build it, let's build it right.
Yeah.
And build it big enough.
Do you know where the, I see Charlie was asking, ma'am, you were asking, do you know where the middle school is out here?
It's Hill Gustaf Middle School.
Out here, there's, you know, that's Orion runs along that lake right there where the parents park every night, pick the kids up, right before you get to their property, there's a dirt road.
Stories.
It's north and it's up at the end of that and what's, Mike's saying, it's good, there's electric there, we've got water possibilities, we've got sewages and so forth, and it's flat and we own it.
And I believe, I believe the zoning on our first location right now is a residential zoning, so we would have to go through the whole process of changing that. The second location by Hill Gustaf Middle School, I don't think, Drew, we checked the zoning yet, but we will, we can look into that, so.
Good.
Okay.
Okay, I have.
Got more?
Yes. This might be for Mike. I had a resident on Granada about three weeks ago tell me to, he said, come over to my house and just sit there and watch, you know, the first speed bump to the stop. house and just sit there and watch, you know, the first speed bump to the stop sign. It's pretty much a racetrack, and there's a lot of kids there now. And I just wondered, and I promised him I would bring it up, if maybe we could get another speed bump there, or at least have you guys look at it, because they do travel pretty fast from the stop sign to the first speed bump.
I agree with you 100%, but on the speed bumps, in the past, what we've done is the people that live on the street would, would come to what, well, would come to you with a petition. And I think, Tanya, I'm not, what would have to be like 67?
I believe to be 60.
60% of the people that live on the street have to sign it. Which I don't think you're going to have a problem with.
Okay, well, is that something that I should do, or we, you know, you tell me what? I mean, I sat out in the guy's driveway and I, I wasn't sure, but man, they really go down that, there's a lot of kids there now in that area.
If the homeowners on that street are interested in a new speed bump, you would need to prepare a petition to the Board of Supervisors with signatures and where, the location of exactly what you're, you're looking at as a possibility.
Well, I might do that, but would you guys help me if, get that ready?
We can get a list, we can get a list so the people that live on the street.
Okay, okay.
Can I follow up to that question since we're on the subject? And it very well could be the same people that you talked to, I don't know, since we can't talk. But anyway, are you saying we would need some number, 60% or 50, 60% of the whole street, or just a segment? Because I'll tell you, that's a long street.
Right.
And where the area of concern is, is kind of right up to here.
Well, for instance, Columbus, Chuck Frifetti wanted one on Columbus, so he got the whole street, and that's why we have the speed bumps. You know, and we put, I think we put three or four on there, so, I mean...
So it is, it is the full length of the street?
That's, that's fine, I mean, I just, and it is a racetrack, so.
Right.
Okay, the next thing I want to bring up was the Lenai that I know at the clubhouse, I'd like to somehow start the process of finding out how to enclose that, if we possibly could, and get that ready for next season. I don't, I don't know who really to talk to about it, other than, I think, I know Kurt, when I first moved here, Kurt, about a year afterwards, Kurt had a plan, but I think it was only one and half of it that you wanted to enclose, but...
And it was enclosing the south end of it and leaving the, what would be the west side still open with screen, so.
But I'd like to do, I really would, and I, I don't know if Jim would like to comment on it, but I, I think it's needed just because of the shotguns, the 1 o'clock shotguns that come in, plus it could be vital for more seating from the people, but I'd like to enclose the whole thing.
I can maybe answer a little of that. We had a meeting yesterday, I guess it was, with Ron, Jim, Robert Butts, myself, and Tanya, and what you're talking about, I think is going to be brought into that architect thing for the kitchen, as a side thing, to see what kind of costs we got, and their ideas how to fix it.
So we're going to lump it in together?
Well...
Well, I believe the idea is we're hiring an architect for Clubhouse renovations, and part of those renovations could be Lenai, would be kitchen, whatever the board entertains. Once we, once the board approves an architect, my first, I guess, order of business would be to have a workshop with all of you, so we can sit down with the architect and staff and talk about what it is that he is going to be doing and what his scope of work is. So if it's the Lenai, if it's the kitchen, whatever, you know, ideas that you're having, I mean, we need to bring an architect into, into the Lenai project.
Is that what you meant when you said something in February, in February or March about the clubhouse expansion? Is that, or whatever, was that what you?
Clubhouse expansion is primarily kitchen.
So the kitchen is a clubhouse expansion?
Yes, it is. Yes, the kitchen is. But if the Lenai is, is an option you want to discuss with the architect in the initial workshop, then, then feel free to do it. That is, that's the appropriate time. We will need a, and I believe we need an architect involved in, in any Lenai expansion or removing walls or adding, you know, whatever the case it is that you want.
I wanted to expand the kitchen, I want to enclose the Lenai.
You just want to hire a contractor.
I don't know about moving walls, and that sounds like too much money to me.
I don't know what everyone's ideas are. Everyone may have a different idea.
I just, I just want to make sure we get moving and get, work on one of them, and I don't want this to set, you know, because I asked you initially about if we could borrow the money to do this, and you said yes, so I didn't think it was really a budget issue because it's only, it'd only be a short-term budget issue if, if we loaned the money, or borrowed the money. But I just, I don't want it to get bogged down, and we need to, you know, keep working on it, that's...
You done? Yep. Curtis?
Really don't have anything, other than last night, and I get a chance to go look at it myself, but Mike, a homeowner told me that another homeowner put a big shrub on the corner of Cortez and Nita, and he's concerned that it's a visual block at the intersection, so maybe you can go look at it.
Yeah, I'll go get, actually, when I leave here.
I think you've covered everything that I was going to talk about. Move over into the Sunshine Workshop.
You want to go and take, let's take a five-minute or 10-minute recess.
I might mention to some of you, if you want to leave, feel free to, you're free to, to listen, I think, to the Sunshine thing, but it is a little on the boring side. Thank you, we'll take five, come back. David, you want to go ahead and lead?
Absolutely. All right, gentlemen, so the introductory portion of this kind of talks briefly about what the role of the supervisors are. The grand scheme is that the, you guys as a board are the broad strokes of the management of the district, the direction the district is going. You have to, you've delegated a lot of authority to the general manager, and you can delegate additional authority if you know, if you feel, you feel it's necessary for the, you know, the smooth operation of the district. Obviously, you're very involved in the budgeting, you're doing your regular meetings and planning for their future growth. One thing I want to point out is that action is taken as a board. Individually, you are not supposed to direct employees, that's for the general manager to, to take care of. The only actions that, that you do are when you do them as a whole. So that's just something to remember. If there's, if there's things that you see going on that you don't like, you know, what you should do is get in touch with Tanya, bring it to her attention, let her handle it.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Jim, from the golf course, he's always asking, you know, to keep your eye open, if you see something that needs to be done, come and tell me, something like that. He's always doing that. I mean, you never see me, you didn't ask you that.
Yeah, he promotes, he promotes the talk to us instead of...
And that's fine, you know, that's, that's fine. The big thing is, because they can ask for input all they want. The distinction is directing. You know, you don't want to, if he comes to you and says, you know, I want somebody, but don't go to him and say, hey, Jim, I saw this, and I, you need to go take care of this right now. You know, that's the type of, the type of conduct we don't want to have happen.
And if, if there's something we go to Tanya with, we can't talk to them until we come here, right?
Correct, correct.
And then we say, guys, let's tell Tanya that she's got to do, I mean...
Oh, I mean, yeah, I mean, if you, like I say, isn't it...
If I tell her, she'll only hearing it from me. But what I want to do is communicate to these guys and tell them what the problem is, and then I guess we have to, as a group, come to Tanya then.
Well, I mean, you can, you can, yeah, you can talk to her about things, the main thing is like, is if you see policies that aren't being followed. If you see the stuff that's not happening that should be happening, you know, but it's a, that's one thing, that's to bring it to Tanya's attention. Tanya, I saw this, this, you know, policy's not being followed, I want to make sure that that happens in the future. Tanya then goes and makes sure those policies are being followed. What you don't go is you go, I don't like this policy, Tanya, and I think we need to do this instead. Now you're talking about changing policy, that's what you can't do individually. So that's just the distinction, is the rules are in place, everything's been, been put in place by the previous boards, how the district we want, want to run. If you see things aren't happening that way, bring it to Tanya's attention, you know, talk to Jim, that's all perfectly fine. If you don't, if you don't, if you disagree with the policies, that's something that has to be addressed as a board.
Right, well, I just meant, I can't go to Tanya with a problem and then call these guys and say, you go there and talk to her.
No, 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 yeah, you can't do that.
And that's, and that's where sometimes there seems to be...
The worst yet, don't do it in an email.
But that's, that's just my, it's frustrating because it takes, it could be two weeks before a problem.
It takes a lot of time.
It takes a lot of time, because you just can't do that, so, okay.
Yeah, speaking of that, that brings us to the Sunshine Law. The pertinent statute is Florida Statute 286.011, and it's got three basic requirements. Number one, that all meetings by public boards must be open to the public, reasonable notice of those meetings must be given, and minutes must be taken and promptly recorded. So those are the three big things that have to occur to comply. The big question is what constitutes a meeting? Well, it's any time more than one of you talk about something. You know, if, if it's, if it's a matter which foreseeably, and that's a nice attorney word, foreseeably, is going to come before the board, then, you know, it's, that's something that needs to be done in the sunshine. Now, you guys can sit down at the bar and talk about what's going to go on in the district if we get invaded by aliens all you want, because that's not foreseeably ever going to happen. But if it's something that you have to, basically, if you're sitting, if you're talking to each other, you know, obviously, and the other thing is, you know, public perception. You guys are perfectly allowed to talk about anything that does, that's not district business anytime you want. That doesn't, that is not a sunshine issue. But if you're, if the five of you are huddled in a corner over by the bar, how's that going to look? You may be talking about your grandkids or your golf game or whatever, but always be aware of what public opinion can be, because that's, those are the things, or public perception, because that's what can bring about an investigation. If someone starts seeing stuff happening regularly, regularly, they go to somebody and suddenly now there's an investigation to find out whether or not something occurred. It might have all been perfectly innocent, but always be, you know, thinking about perception. The easiest way, and it's right there in that paragraph, is when you, before you start talking about something, is will this ever come before the board for a vote? If you, if the answer is possibly yes, then my recommendation is don't talk about it. You know, we have, we meet often enough where, and like I say, you can make notes about, about something, and that goes also, I mean, if you're having a private conversation with someone, and, you know, you need to be aware of who's in earshot, you know, the, because obviously you guys are around each other or can be around each other at different times. You know, if you're, you know, talking 10 feet away from each other about the same type of stuff, that's, you know, again, it's a public perception issue. You don't want that, you know, want that out there. There are, on rare exceptions, there's also a possibility that if a single board member, and this doesn't happen often, but if you're, if you've been, if you've been granted authority by the board, so for whatever reason, they said, Dr. Edgell, we want you to go out, we're going to build this storage facility, we want you to go over to this person and negotiate something, and we're granting you the authority, you know, to accept or to negotiate this and conclude it. Normally, that's something the general manager's going to take care of, but on the exception where that happens, those can even be considered sunshine issues, where if you're negotiating with the full authority of the board, it's considered a meeting. And so generally, we're just going to try and keep away from that type of stuff, those type, but that's the kind of, that's the kind of authority you delegate to the general manager, so you don't have that issue, so.
My question...
Has that happened?
It doesn't happen, but I bring it up because it's a possibility.
Well, there was a time when, when I negotiated Tanya's contract with her, and by the authority of the board, so how would that violate the Sunshine Law?
I don't know that it necessarily would. Because eventually, that issue came back to the board for a, for a vote. But if someone, if you're being granted authority to go, and you can go and now bind the board by doing this thing, that's, it's a, is it a possibility?
Oh, it's the second phase.
Yeah, we try to avoid, we always want to make sure that if there's some sort of negotiating ability, it's always going to come back to the board as a whole. But there's that, that...
I would think that that would probably never happen with us five.
I can't imagine that.
Again, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's in there because it's, it's a rule.
I could see us talking to somebody, but then say, Tanya, go talk to him, you know, that's...
It always comes back to the board.
Exactly. By the same token, intermediaries are prohibited. You can't, you know, have Tanya or any other district staff say, just like you talked about earlier, Mr. Gilpin, you know, I've talked to Tanya about this, and now I want you, Tanya, I want you to go talk to Larry, you know, you can't do that, you know, she can't act as an intermediary.
That's the real big problem with this whole thing. But thank God we got the meetings now, we can say that.
Start on the next page, what defines reasonable notice, you know, basically just the public has to have enough notice to be able to attend the, the meeting. Page, I don't know if we're getting new versions of this book, the 2017 and...
We can order.
Do you guys all have a copy of this? Yeah, I think everybody does.
The old version, yeah. Marked up a lot.
Yeah, but like I say...
I'm not sure if there's any changes necessarily to the statute, so we'll get a, a few copies.
Yeah, if we, if we need them, you know, but as it stands right now, that's 16 is what I'm still using, so, but page 37 of that does talk a little bit about if you're interested in going in and reading to that. Open to the public, you know, what is it, does the meeting, the meeting has to be open to the public. That means that pretty much anybody, you don't have to live here, you know, don't have to be a resident, just any public person that wants to can come and attend these meetings. But the board is allowed to adopt rules to make sure that the meeting runs smoothly. Like I say, our three-minute rule, you know, an additional two minutes of public comment if the board approves, you know, that's stuff that's been determined, you know, that's, that's reasonable to, to keep the, the meeting going. That brings us into public participation, that I would recommend going over that whole section, but they all, public, you know, members of the public have to be given a reasonable opportunity to speak. As just mentioned, you know, those stuff that keeps, the rules that keep the meeting moving, you know, moving forward are perfectly allowed. But we do have to let them talk. Next page, public records.
Can I just, I realize this is, I guess, a statute, but do we not have somewhere that indicates that they really, I know they can do comments, public comments, because according to this, that's what they're supposed to be able to do. But I was also under the impression that maybe they could, we could, as a board, request their questions in writing and then get back to them.
Senator Reno did that.
Did he? I wasn't here at that time.
And generally, that happens, that's what happens at the school board. If you want to get up and speak about a specific topic, you have to, and like I say, that's all stuff that, you know, if it's, what's it put in, it's implemented, you know, we can absolutely do that if you want that to happen. Whenever, like I say, when the board's talking about a specific resolution, any comments have to be about that resolution, and that person starts going off topic, you can reel them in, cut them off, and say, look, that's not the topic we're discussing right now. No, you're, what you want to talk about is a, is a public, is a, during the public opinion time. And if we want to make it where anybody that wants to talk it, you know, during the public comment section, you have to fill out a card, let us know what's going to hap, you know, what you're going to be talking about, and just put it right on there. You know, you're going to get to talk for three minutes. If you want additional time, you're going to have to ask the board. And so that, and that's stuff that they would fill out and sign.
Yeah, now, the county clerk that we met, the lady who was just reappointed, she told me when I was talking to her, she said, they, they had to do that to Jackson and Act. They had to, they had to cut them out. They just, it just got way out of hand.
That was at a county commissioner meeting.
Yeah, county commissioner meeting, and they made them write down anybody, changed the whole rules because of those two. And then finally, they didn't come back.
Yeah.
So they don't do it anymore. They dropped, I think they dropped that situation.
Yeah, I think, generally, things here recently have been going pretty smoothly, and I don't, I don't know we need to...
Finally.
Yeah, I don't know we don't need to start getting draconian, but that, you know, that's, you know, that, the ability is there, and it's, like I say, we're, we're a public body and, and we have probably some of the most relaxed rules of, of all, of all that I've seen. So, you know, if you feel that it's, we're starting to have issues, don't be afraid, we've absolutely got the power to start clamping down on what goes on.
Okay.
The good old public records. Per the Florida Supreme Court, all materials made or received by an agency in connection with official business which are used to perpetuate, communicate, or formalize knowledge, regardless of whether it is in a final form or ultimate product of an agency, is a public record. So basically, any way, you know, any handwritten notes, you know, any text messages, absolutely anything that you use to, you know, to, to talk about or discuss public business is a public record. So technically, obviously, those are all supposed to be saved and, you know, delivered to the, to the records custodian. to the, to the records custodian. Now, let's say, I think the majority of you all have emails that are done, go through the district website, or go through the district servers.
I don't. My emails comes to me by, by...
Wally has elected not to have a, a district email, but again, he, he responds to me over the phone or stops in the office. That's your primary response usually, but no, I email you, just like I would any other board member, but you have a personal email.
Right. And that's, that's the only time that I use email with this situation, is when you send emails and I...
When I send him information.
Your notice, I don't even answer you.
And that's the main thing, is that to be aware of, is that, you know, if you're, if it's, and when is it, when could it, could it happen, yes? When, you know, is it likely to happen, probably not? Is if you're discussing district business with someone that's not, you know, district personnel? Like if you're, if this, for some reason, you were to send a question to Doug, or to me, you know, I know, yeah, to me, you know, that, that, you know, that, I, we need to make sure that that gets back to a records custodian so that they, we don't have to maintain it, because you do not have to maintain additional copies. Everything that goes through the, the district servers, you know, is backed up, you don't have to worry about keeping it, you know.
That's the reason I went to it.
Every, every email that you send and receive with the SNLDistrict.org extension is saved in the, on our servers, so we have record of all that.
Chrissy, why don't we just go ahead, since this is the first day of the new term, go ahead and sort it over.
Good time.
The district web, the district server, I know, the exchange server keeps a record of every single piece of information that goes back and forth.
Yes.
So, not that I have to worry about this, but I also have, obviously, personal emails that I correspond, you know, on regular business. I don't, not going through the, the exchange server. In the event that something happened, the exchange server information is the only thing that you are entitled to, or am I incorrect in stating that?
If it's district business being discussed in any format, it is a public record, and has to be kept. So that's why I was saying, it's, the easiest thing to do is to maintain, but let's say for an example, if you accidentally sent me an email from your personal email address to me and my work address, that's not, that doesn't go through the exchange server, so we need to make sure a copy of that gets back and is retained as a public record.
Okay, and I just wanna make sure that, so the, they could seize, in fact, your system and go through the emails.
Arguably, they could, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Only if it's district business, only, yeah, not, not personal, but only if it's...
But it doesn't, the thing is, you know, we all know politically what's happened. Sometimes they're personal, and they say, well, there's maybe district, so they have to go through them, they have to go through them all.
Yeah, it would take a subpoena or something like that, because you could say, you know, they would say, produce all of your, all the district records, and you say, it's all in the exchange server. They would, nothing was ever, no, nothing was ever, so if they wanted to actually go through your personal computer, they'd have to get a subpoena in order to do that.
David?
Yes?
Question on the, on the records? Like, when I get done with a meeting here, I got a file cabinet, it goes in, and so all of 2016 are in the file cabinet? When I get done with that, I pull it out and put it in a box, and beyond two years, I'm not keeping it, is that...
Well, yeah, we can talk about that, because retention periods are based on subject matter. You'll see in that, in that big block of text, there's a highlighted or a bolded portion. And it says, you know, retention periods are determined by the content, nature, and purpose of the records, and are set based on their legal, fiscal, administrative, and historical values regardless of the format. So, I mean, you could have a text, you know, a text message where you're just, you know, mentioning something very brief, you know, that, that's, that's almost a material, that text message may only have to be retained for 60, 90 days a year, you know, at most. But if that text message is talking about budget issues, now we're in fiscal and that has to be retained longer. So, you know, generally, the best thing to do is if you can avoid creating a record, avoid it. You know, talk about these type of things at the public meeting, you can talk to Tanya all you want, you can talk to Omar all you want, once you send an email or send a text, now I've created a record, do I have to be sa, does it have to be saved and for how long? So, the best advice I can give you is, talk on the phone, you know, talk face to face, you know, but, you know, because just be aware, any time that there's a, anything, you know, any, anything at all, is this gonna be a public record, should I talk about it? Because I, I mean, I do that constantly, you know, if I need to talk to Tanya about something, I was like, well, this, I don't really wanna put this in an email, so I'll just call her on the phone.
And another important thing to remember, if one of us just happens to send an email, never respond to it.
I've never responded to it.
Exactly, yeah.
Even to Tanya, I would, I'll call.
But it is, I mean, it is.
It's different this way, but this way, don't, don't ever respond to it.
And like, you'll see, the big, the big, the big scare is, one of you sends an email to Tanya, okay? Or, or Tanya, Tanya sends an email, you know, to, to everybody, to all five of you, you know, here's something that's coming up, you know, please be aware of this, and then one of you accidentally replies to all. Don't reply to all. You can reply back to Tanya, but be very careful, reply to all.
If all of them's across the top, does that not go back to everybody?
Sorry?
No, you have to reply to reply all.
Reply and reply all, yeah.
The default is generally just reply. So, I mean, but I don't know how you have your computers or systems set up, you know, but generally, the default is reply to the person that sent the email.
Right.
But it has happened before where someone has replied to all.
You have to bother with the page which got that error.
Now, when I've sent emails to you, you're gonna notice that when I title it to supervisors, you may not see the other supervisor's email addresses in there. That helps prevent, if, just in case you accidentally hit reply all, I don't, I don't, it's not gonna work in that situation. So if, if you've seen an email come through to you from me, and I address it as supervisors, I am technically addressing all of you, but you don't see the other email addresses. Have you noticed that?
Are you blind copying them?
You're doing it as a group.
Are you doing a blind copy?
I am, I'm doing it as a group, and I am doing it as a blind copy, so you don't see the other email.
We don't see them.
That's right. You don't see them, but I do. It helps prevent that, so that's, takes, takes away the ability to do so, yes.
Jim's awful bad about sending an email to all of us.
Yeah.
Got everybody's name across the top.
That's okay, that's fine.
But, and I, I wasn't sure how...
Let me communicate that with him.
How the reply came back, but if it's, if it's just forward back to him, that's, that's...
And as always, if you got any question, you know, if you're, if you're worried about something like this is on, just call me up, you know, call me up, send me, you know, call first, if I'm not available. If I'm not available, then send me an email.
Chrissy, why can't I print out the, the list of everyone's addresses, self, contact list?
You can't print it out?
Uh-uh.
Uh, could be your PC, it could be, you don't have the software, because I use Adobe. Anytime I send that documentation out, it's Adobe.
A Adobe reader and all that?
Yeah, so...
He should have that.
A PDF?
Also, it depends on the version, too, if you have an older version, it might not be compatible.
Well, that usually updates itself.
It's free, Adobe Reader is free, and be, be sure to, every, all of you...
I'll play with it. Okay, Wally admitted your challenge.
Yeah.
Your challenge.
Some of you may not have Microsoft, some of you may not have Microsoft Excel or Word, so we attempt to remember to send everything in a PDF format for you. I know Jim and I have talked about that some, so if you ever receive it in a format that you can't read, let me know, and we'll get it in the right format for you.
We'll play with it.
David or Tanya, I, can I talk about something that happened at the meeting now with us here, what's going on?
We're still on the, we're still on record.
Okay.
We're still, I mean, the meeting is still ongoing.
Okay, I, I mean, no, no bad things about this, but when I talked about the lanai in the kitchen, I was not aware, period, that you guys had a meeting yesterday, or the day before. And I, for some reason, that makes me upset, because here I am working on, trying to work on stuff, and we got our president and you, and Ron Wonderling and Jim, working on something that we're gonna do, and I don't know, Wally, did you know about her, Mark, or Kurt?
I don't think anybody...
I mean, I, I can tell you, whoever the president is, I, I don't, I would like, I don't like that.
Well, the meeting, I informed all of you of the meeting that we were having, it was due to the, the, the letter from Jim Travis, and that's what our discussions were. And I called, I called all of you and told you that we were having a meeting to discuss that and how we were going to resolve that issue.
Yeah, and I think that was good.
Somehow, somehow, I don't know how the lanai got brought up. Well, I do know how, because part of the, as part of the golf committee meeting, Jim presented some ideas about changes with the waitress and the staffing and the bar being busy and all the lines. That's how the lanai got brought up in, in that conversation, but the, the purpose of the meeting yesterday was to discuss the, the issues and the complaints at the clubhouse and the restaurant, and what we're gonna do in response to Mr. Travis's letter.
And that, that I think is good.
That was the purpose of yesterday's meeting.
I did, I, I mean, just, it irritates me that, the other stuff, like the lanai, I mean, I don't want, I don't, I'm, I'm really passionate about getting some of this stuff done, so you can tell, because it bothered me, but it just seems like a lot of things get done or down the road before we even getting involved, and we even know what's going on. And I, I just think it'd be nice if, if, you know, and maybe that's the way we do things here, but I'm not used to that, not at all. I mean, I'm a supervisor, I'm involved.
He can't get more than himself involved, the ways you, you need a, you need a public meeting.
Well, there might not be an answer, but I'm just, it irritates me.
We meet once a month with Bob Butts, Kenya and I, Jim and Bob, used to be Dan, and go over what the golf committee has got, any direction there they need, and then it comes back into the board. Now, it is not a secret meeting, but we have to discuss it, and what it is, is to try to get something back in the meetings that we can go forward. And that's the same thing what it was yesterday, we were trying to resolve this, to keep this thing. The original thing was, they wanted to read this letter, your day, and that's the last thing in the world we want.
Yeah, we didn't want that, that was a good, I thought that was...
That was the last thing.
I even said, good job. I mean, that, that was a good job.
We worked with Travis on Tuesday and explained it all to him, and Tanya didn't even contact David on it, and we got that kinda resolved. He had some issues with the, over New Year's.
Yeah, I'm sure we've all heard it, yeah.
I think you've all read that stuff.
We all know, and, and he's talked to all of us separately, you know.
And, you know, he, you've read all that stuff, and so we got Ron and Jim together.
And Ron was already in town anyway, because Ron Wonderling and Ron Garl, all of that, they, too many Rons, but...
I think that's good that you guys met with Jim.
But, yes.
But I'm, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about, and it's happened, the first year on the board, there's a lot of things have happened that I didn't know about until it was well into process, and that, and whether we can do anything about it or not, because he's only here for another, there is gonna be a new president. So whoever it is, I just, I'd like, if we can, to, to be born formed, and if, and if I'm out of line, then I'm out of line.
Being a previous president, I can tell you right now, there's a lot of meetings going on that the other four board members aren't aware.
Yeah, and I don't think that's right.
There's no way to eliminate.
You can't eliminate.
I just...
Yeah, I mean, the best, the best solution I could think of is just try and pick a day, you know, for, and, and call Tanya, say, you know, what's, you know, get a weekly update, you know, what, you know, what, if you, you know, what went on this week, you know, because you'll know the stuff that you've been involved in, but, but, yeah, I mean, this is just, just part of the, of the, of the process, is it, it has to happen that way, because otherwise, everything is a sunshine law meeting and, and it's...
Well, see, when I was on our city council, it was so different, and that's what I'm struggling with, because so many things come up, and it's like, it's, it's a one quarter done or a half done before I even hear about it. And it's frustrating. I mean, I, I gotta tell you that, and I'm not, I don't mean ill will with anybody, it's just...
Did the, the original sunshine bunch that, that come up with the sunshine law live in four or five different states?
I honestly don't know, I know.
Seems like they should have.
Okay, well, they're all different. I know there were been old boards back in West Virginia, the sunshine law of West Virginia, absolutely only meant one thing, you could go into executive session, discuss personnel and budget, and then you had to back out and say what you said. Outside of that, we talked to each other all the time about stuff.
Yeah, it's, it's just a process that I gotta get used to, it looks to me like, just live with it.
It is different, it is.
But it's, it's frustrating, I can tell you.
I understand, I understand what Kurt was saying, and, and certainly, the, it would be a violation if, if we were brought into any of those other conversations.
Oh, yeah, I know that.
And I totally get that. One of the things, and, and it's just a thought, we have this open discussion at the end of the meeting, which is a good time for us to, to talk amongst the board members where we couldn't speak before, because it'd be a violation. But is it potentially something that we could look at that, at the end of the meeting, you could say, if it's not undue, and I'll work on you, to say, look, we had these meetings this week, and these are the things, or this month, and these are the things that we discussed? In other words, we discover this a lot of times by accident, somebody makes mention of it, and then it becomes a discussion. Okay, is there a way that maybe you could do a synopsis of those meetings after, you know, the regular, as part of discussion? Or would that be just divulging too much information, which it shouldn't be?
Well, I mean, it could be, I mean, that could be done at the meeting, but then, where, like I say, we're only having one or two meetings, you know, a month, you know, so, I mean, obviously, that's, you know, we try to, we try to bring up as much as, as, as we can, I'm sure Tanya does, to try and keep you guys as, as informed as possible.